Review with call. Oh, there we go. There's that magic. Well, it's all official now. Okay. Good. Welcome this evening to to the November sixteenth. Planning Commission meeting at six P M or at six oh, at six oh three. This is an electronic meeting. This meeting is being held pursuant to and in compliance with ordinance number twenty dash A sixteen. An ordinance to ensure the continuity continuity of government during the COVID nineteen disaster. Opportunities for the public to access and participate in the electronic meeting will be posted on the. Albemarle dot org, community, county hyphen calendar when available. Madam, would you see, would you call us to order to establish a quorum, please?
Yes, I will. Mister Bailey.
Present.
Miss Mister Keller.
Present in Albemarle County.
Miss Firehawk is absent. Mister Randolph.
Present.
Mister Bivens.
Present.
Miss Moore. Absent.
I believe she's absent this evening.
Mister Claiborne.
Present.
And Mister Carazana.
Present.
Okay, thank you. I'll keep an eye out for Miss Moore. Maybe she's gonna be here soon.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this evening, I don't see, we don't have any, anything on our consent agenda, so we'll move on from that. Madam, do you know if we have anybody signed up for matters not listed on the agenda?
Uh, yes, we do. We have two people. First, I have Neil Williamson. Neil, please. State your name and affiliation, and I will start your three minutes as soon as you start talking.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. My name is Neil Williamson, and I serve as the president of the Free Enterprise Forum, a privately funded public policy organization focused on Central Virginia's local governments. This evening, I start with a question. How long should it take to get a building permit? In Albemarle County, it is currently taking over four months to have a building permit issued. The Community Development Department and the Free Enterprise Forum agree that is not acceptable. On Friday morning, our sources indicated there were over three hundred residential and commercial permits sitting in the plans review queue alone. This person did not have updates to share on them. However, they aren't lost just waiting. These applications were properly filed with thousands of dollars of fees which increased on July first, and they are not actively being reviewed. They are waiting in Albemarle's permit pending purgatory between received and filed. We recognize these lowly building permits do not have the clever Economic Development Authority project code names like Knight Rider, Packet, or Daffodil, nor do they represent brand new residential developments with hundreds of units. Instead, these new construction projects, large and small, across Albemarle County, include new homes fulfilling the comprehensive plan, additions to help grandma age in place with her family, and an extra bathroom to make mornings a little easier for growing families. These not so sexy projects represent not only millions of dollars in fees and related activity for Albemarle County. These delays impact project cost and these families' quality of life. We have been engaged since the summer with the Community Development Department staff and the Blue Bridge Home Builders Association to identify and address these concerns. We appreciate C D D's efforts in transparency with the issues they face. We know C D D staff is working across the county organization to tackle these challenges, but it's not getting better. It's getting worse. We find it is critical that elected and appointed officials understand the vast scope of the problem and help find and fund a solution now. As an advisory body, the Free Enterprise Forum understands the Planning Commission has a legal responsibility to review the comp, the the capital improvement plan on tonight's agenda, where new C D D software could potentially be funded. In addition, this body regularly weighs in on the Community Development Work Plan. Considering this close coordination with community development, we believe it is within the Planning Commission's purview to advocate for one, dedication of significant additional resources and personnel to permit intake and review for community development. Two, invest now in a new software platform, perhaps via the C I P, to allow efficient processing of all applications. And three, in the spirit of the Land Use Reform Committee, L R C, the Development Initiative Steering Committees, DISC one and two, establish a broad-based committee charged with reviewing and streamlining the development procedures to get permits and projects approved and completed in Albemarle County. While this may seem kind of a larger scope than the Planning Commission's normal procedures, nothing could be more impactful. Let's get Albemarle County Community Development moving again. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Next, I have Peter Krebs. Peter, please state your name, and organization that you're affiliated with, and your time starts as soon as you start speaking.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Peter Krebs from the Piedmont Environmental Council. Tonight, you'll be hearing and speaking about the comprehensive plan and the C I P. Those two topics are actually closely related, and it's not bad to consider them both at the same time. Last night, the city of Charlottesville, Charlottesville City Council approved its conference of plan. The two localities are definitely not the same, but there are likely to be some key common themes such as climate action, housing, historic preservation, green infrastructure, transportation and mobility, and everything it takes to be a highly livable community that includes parks, greenways, and well-connected neighborhoods. P E C has worked with Albemarle County for the last fifty years on issues of this kind, and we're excited to be part of this iteration as well. As I said to City Council last night, the C I P is where the values enumerated in the comp plan are made manifest. As you think about the C I P and the next five years, I hope you'll build upon a couple of things Albemarle has been doing extremely well lately. I, you've made a commitment to improving resident quality of life through the creation of sidewalks, greenways, and other forms of connectivity. You've taken an approach to economic growth that rewards local enterprises and fosters prosperity by help, helping local residents live healthy lives and unleashing their productivity. Uh, you've taken important first steps to open Bisca Run with an initial mini-phase slated for this coming fall, twenty twenty-two. Between ACE and a handful of other programs, more than a hundred thousand acres of land have been protected for agriculture, forestry, and natural habitat. County staff have done a fabulous job of leveraging state transportation dollars, yielding a phenomenal return on your investment in them. As you think about this upcoming budget, build on your recent wins. Albemarle County has a vision of how to be a terrific, great place to live. The comp plan is the what and the why. The budget is the how. Thank you, and I look forward to listening to the rest of the meeting.
Thank you. And at this time, I don't have anyone else with their hand raised.
Thank you very much, and thank you for those comments from the secret that come up, observations and comments this evening. Then, on that note, we will work and move into our, to our first of our two work sessions this evening, and that's the C I P fiscal years twenty twenty, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-seven. Uh, could we hear from Mister Bowman and this Kumazawa?
Yes, good evening to the Chair and the Planning Commission. Uh, my name is Andy Bowman. I'm the Chief of Budget in the Finance, Finance and Budget Department. And unfortunately, Miss Kumazawa was not able to join us this evening. I'll be joined by Rosalind Schmidt, who's the Chief Operating Officer with the School Division. Uh, Rosalind and school staff and county government staff and I regularly partner on a number of joint local governments and school budget issues, and the C I P certainly no exception to that. Now, I'll say that I'm also joined this evening by Tia Mitchell. She's a senior budget analyst in her office, and she primarily works in the areas of the capital budget and the, in the, in the planning for that, and she's here with me too. And we do have a presentation last year. If you can go ahead and pull that up. And while Tia is pulling that up, I'll say that this presentation is a somewhat streamlined version of one that staff provided last month to the Board of Supervisors in School Board in October on the twentieth. And I want to provide as much of that same information for a discussion heading into the twenty-three budget development process. Uh, so that the Planning Commission and their representatives can receive the same information as we start that process next week. And if Miss Firehawk is not here this evening, we'll be sure to get this material to her in advance. So with that introduction, though, I've streamlined it. Some, this presentation likely had first of all a financial orientation than the usual planning commission meeting. And I haven't modified this drastically because I want to make sure that I provided the same to all the bodies involved in the C I P process. Uh, but anyway, with that, I'll also say that, uh, you know, some, some of the planning commissioners I've met before, some I have not. Uh, and part of the reason is that last year, when we were putting together the fiscal year twenty's budget, there was no C I P. Uh, the county was in the middle of pandemic. There was a tremendous amount of uncertainty, and really, at that time, was kind of decided to, uh, instead of focusing on a long-range picture, to focus on the impacts of the pandemic and what might be able to be unpaused from a number of projects that were paused at the start of the pandemic. So this will be the first time we've had a discussion with planning commission about the C I P in a while. As we get back into more routine, long-range planning track, that will continue in the future. So if someone who's wondering why they haven't heard from the Office of Management and Budget while kind of that experience of the pandemic is the reason for that. So we can go ahead to the next slide. And, uh, just for the items we'll cover today, I'm going to begin by providing an overview of the county's financial position as it's fair since the start of the pandemic. I'll then speak to where we currently are as an organization with capital program and how that informs our thinking into the future. And beyond those broader concepts, I'll then discuss that twenty-three to twenty-seven process in a little more detail, looking at the calendar, the role of C I P Advisory Committee, and some initial assumptions and staff's approach to prepare for that committee's work. Uh, Rosalind and I will briefly provide some preliminary summary information on some of the proposed capital projects that have been identified by the board and school board. And our information is to cover this information concisely to allow as much time for the planning commission to discuss this as possible. I believe it was about, uh, maybe it was twenty-five minutes or so when we covered this last month with joint boards. So, uh, speaking of that discussion, we can go ahead to the next slide. At the end of the presentation, we have some questions to prompt that discussion for the planning condition. I want to share these in advance as you reference, uh, hopefully this will resonate with you as we go through the presentation. Uh, those two questions are first, how does your awareness of the county's past, present, and future inform your thinking about the overall capital program, both in terms of our process and our projects? And secondarily, uh, you know, if there's, or I shouldn't say secondarily, but the second question is what additional information would uh, the planning commission look for, uh, as we head into the C I P Advisory Committee? And, uh, as the board heads into the spring to adopt a capital plan for the first time in two years. And, uh, I'll say certainly, uh, as we follow up with Miss Firehawk and get her prepared for the advisory committee, we can include that feedback as well. So now I would ask, as we run through this presentation, just to make sure that we can get through the material to allow as much time for you all to have that discussion and for staff to listen that will, I'll plan to address any questions at the end of the presentation. So moving on, uh, right into content, this is just a transition slide to focus first on financial planning. And, uh, don't worry, I'm not going to read everything on this slide and talk about it in depth, but I'm going to just at a very high summary level. Nineteen months ago, as the pandemic was beginning, the county was nearing the end of the fiscal year twenty-one budget development process. And as the pandemic began, we really worked through a process for that entire budget year to be scrapped and redone in a matter of weeks. And to navigate that unprecedented uncertainty, and not only what the county's revenues would be, but what the delivery of basic services would look like in a pandemic, the county adopted what we called a three-six-six approach to financial management. And what three-six-six stands for, it's kind of shorthand for, uh, just managing the last three months of fiscal year twenty. We would then look at the first six months of fiscal year twenty-one and the last six months of fiscal year twenty-one. And as things improved or worsened along the way, we would adjust our planning as needed. You know, fortunately, over the past year, every time we've been able to go to the board supervisors and provide a report, that outlook has improved as each as the economy has recovered through the pandemic. High-level results are on the slide. I'm not going to read through, read through them in the interest of time, but in summary, the takeaway I would share is that the pandemic is still ongoing and the economy is stabilizing and recovering. The actions that were taken by the board and school board during the pandemic, they have ensured the county's financial foundations intact. Uh, we are meeting and compliant with our financial policies. Uh, this summer, we reaffirmed, uh, three triple triple A bond ratings with our rating agencies, and we were able to move initiatives forward as the revenue picture improved and became more certain. That included unposing projects of the capital budget in January, based on the work of last year's C I P Advisory Committee, and moving forward a, uh, a more ambitious budget in fiscal year twenty-two that was able to be adopted at the start of the pandemic, at fiscal year twenty-one. So moving to the next slide, I'm going to talk about next kind of the present and the future together because I want to draw clearly connections about how our current circumstances are informing staff's thinking about how we shape the twenty-three to twenty-seven C I P process. They'll say at first, it's common that we all read the news and we see stories about the impacts of the global supply chain disruptions and increased raw material cost. And the county is certainly not immune to that, and some current projects have received higher bids than when they were first budgeted, or projects have experienced scheduling delays. So this influences where we're going, uh, kind of with the next point, is that you were working to go through our current project budgets for items that have not yet gone out to bid and under contract, where we expect there's a likely budget impact and revisiting those project costs to make sure that we're starting uh, off for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-seven with the worst of six figures. Uh, there's also information we need to update is the state has approved in the last year some additional requirements related to energy efficiency. Uh, those are aligned with the county's plan, action plan goals. Uh, but they will require ensuring that we're developing our projects to the state standards. Uh, I'll say that will update too will be factored in the twenty-three, three to twenty-seven C I P. Now, I should manage, and while we're in the interim, uh, we, you know, we still do have some flexibility. The board supervisors set a reserve in place in twenty-two as we've been able to, uh, navigate some of this uncertainty while we updated project costs and head into the next five-year plan. Uh, but that's the kind of that reference to the four million dollars in the screen. Uh, so the second point I would make about, uh, kind of how the present is influencing the, the future is that we have a capital program currently underway before we even start anything from twenty-three to twenty-seven of around a hundred forty-seven million dollars for sixty-five projects. And you know, without any additional context, a hundred forty-seven is not a very meaningful number by itself. Uh, so I'll provide a couple of data points to provide more context. You know, first is that, uh, of that hundred forty-seven million, ninety-one has been appropriated in the last, uh, really eleven months now from what was unpaused in January, which included major projects such as the expansion at Crossay Elementary School, uh, as well as projects that were then, uh, included in the adopted budget and, uh, you know, that took effect on July first, which included major projects such as the next phase of the downtown ports renovation, uh, project. And so I would say that, you know, of that funding being relatively new, I'll also note that a lot of that hundred forty-seven is very much underway in different phases, whether the pre-designed, design, or construction. And so even some of those projects are in the construction phase right now. Uh, those will be continuing beyond fiscal year twenty-two, as by nature, capital does have multi-year projects. And so in terms of how this affects our thinking for the future, the next point uh, is that we have to consider as we start the start dates for fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-seven, uh, the work that we need to do to implement the current volume, uh, that's, uh, in, at hand. Uh, we went back with our staff to do some analysis and say that over the last eight years or so, even though capital projects vary year to year, correct rate of execution is around thirty-five million dollars. So this has really set off a lot of process that we're in analysis with one in the current to say, let's look at our business processes end to end. Let's look at the systems we use. Look at the resources we need to implement these projects, make sure that that has been aligned as we head into, uh, C I P in the, in the upcoming budget process. So heading on to the next slide, kind of the third or fourth points I'll make about where we are now to where we're going. Uh, and I'll say this one is very relevant to the planning commission. As you all are aware, that during the next five-year period, we will have an updated comprehensive plan as well as a strategic plan. I should note the school board is in a different place as they completed an update to their strategic plan in the summer of twenty twenty-one. And, uh, I would say that in, on October thirteenth, the board supervisors agreed to extend the current fiscal year. I'm sorry, the current strategic plan of this later into fiscal year twenty-three so that, uh, you know, the staff in the community and the board would be able to finish what we started to complete those projects before we embark on another strategic plan following that. So this transitionary period, knowing that we're going to be in one strategic plan now in a different strategic plan and also a comprehensive plan update later influences staff's thinking in two ways. And the first is that our intent would not be to develop the C I P with county's financial and operational capacity is fully committed prior to an updated strategic plan and a comp plan. Uh, you know, there are certainly some community needs that can be planned for in the five-year period. We also need to balance that in the out years with the unknown future. Um, so that if additional priorities or areas of focus are identified, we'll have that flexibility uh, for future boards and future planning commissions and future staffs to be able to pivot to address those. You know, for example, we may, you know, having a portion of the out years just with an undesigned reserve amount for priority strategic community projects, knowing that while we had a lot more certainty than we did a year ago in the pandemic, there's still as much unknown, particularly in the years three through five. I'll say this approach is also to recognize that there are community conversations that are taking place. You know, our board supervisors heard from a regional jail facility assessment in October that they have implications in the future, but part of this approach to be a little more flexible in the out years is not to get ahead of those community conversations and the county's regional partners. So I expect there's a question that may be on the planning commission's mind now is to say, well, if we're going to be less defined in the out years, uh, when would we be updating that? And those who have been with the county for a while may recall that prior to the pandemic, the county would often be in a pattern of, and sort of every year C I P review, where one year we're going to be a full look at the five years of the C I P. And then the following year, there may be more refined minor adjustments. Given the approach we're describing, just kind of the different times we're in pandemic, we feel that would be appropriate to provide a five-year update as best we can, maintain that flexibility. And then a year from now, when we're looking at this near twenty-four to twenty-eight, to take a fresh look at those five years. So I have, uh, presented a lot of concepts in these last two slides. Just to summarize them, kind of the, kind of the present and how this leads into the future is that, uh, we're updating our current project cost for the reality of current market conditions and supply chain issues. Oh, I'm sorry, Tia, just prompted me. I, I forgot the fourth one. Uh, thank you, Tia. Uh, the, the other thing we're considering right now is that, uh, both with the board and the school board is that, uh, long-term priorities exist in the operating budget as well. And so as we're developing a uh, a capital process with the C I P Advisory Committee, we're also be working with the board of supervisors around long-range policy discussions uh, to kind of position ourselves in our operating budget, make sure those two plans are talking to each other so that we have one coherent, uh, long-range financial plan. So now to summarize those, uh, these four points. First is we've got the reality of project cost and being updated for current market conditions. A second, in this five-year period, we're going to consider the start dates for future projects reflecting the current efforts underway of the hundred forty-seven million dollar capital budget. A third, we're going to emphasize flexibility in the out years, knowing that we're in the middle of comprehensive and strategic plan updates. Uh, again, now that we would, we would have funding out there, it would be a little less defined than we would see in a typical year. And then finally, uh, we would be considering the capital decisions in the context of our operating budget and our total financial picture with the board. So moving on to next slide from some very high-level concepts to a little more of a nuts and bolts approach about the work that'll be ahead in coming weeks and into the budget process. I'll go ahead next to the schedule that's ahead. Uh, though we're talking to the planning commission here on, uh, November sixteenth, there's been a lot of work already underway. Uh, the school divisions has a long-range space planning committee. Uh, it starts well ahead of this process. They received a report from that committee in September and worked through a proposal that is uh, going to be considered as part of this long-term capital planning process. And Mitch Schmidt from the school division will be speaking to that in just a little bit. Uh, I mentioned before, we had a discussion with the, uh, joint boards in October to get some of their buy-in and input into the process and some of the concepts that were being, uh, worked there. Uh, in November and December will be the C I P Advisory Committee and also the work sessions with board supervisors on operating five-year planning and how those plans will inform each other. Uh, from there, we'll pick up in February with the release of the school's draft funding request. County executives recommend a budget, and then all of the public process and work sessions that take place through the spring, ultimately leading into a adoption of the budget in, uh, and also the C I P, uh, in May. So to focus next on the role of the C I P Advisory Committee, that is a committee that is made up of two board members, two school board members, one planning commissioner, and one community representative. Now, they're charged to do a few things. First, uh, they will review and evaluate a proposal that is recommended by staff as a starting point. Uh, then the C I P committee will sort of make a recommendation and modify that starting point. Uh, they are to ensure that that proposal is aligned with the county's financial policies, the established priorities and guiding principles that are out there. That they will next make a recommendation to the county executive for his consideration in preparation of the recommended twenty-three capital budget and a twenty-three to twenty-seven C I P. Uh, and also that will be a report out to the board, the school board, uh, staff and planning commission as well. Uh, just to, uh, kind of have the memo that will copy that recommendation will be more than just kind of the dollars and cents and tons of projects. So getting into the actual work of the C I P Advisory Committee on the next slide. Uh, it will begin with a similar framework, uh, to what we had in last year's process. Well, as I said, last year's process was very focused on a short timeframe. If this was your twenty-one, twenty-two, this will be a longer timeframe. Uh, the prioritization of our projects, as it does in most years, will begin with funding the county's obligations, its maintenance and replacement programs before we consider additional projects. I should note that that is not automatic funding for maintenance and replacement request, staff performance, it's due diligence to scrub those numbers, make sure that they are aligned with standards, the ability to execute, and all those other concepts we've talked about this evening. Uh, but before that, we'll get into four criteria. A first of which is the alignment with the county's strategic plan priorities, also the new reality due to the pandemic. The example I think of last year is that were projects where you, uh, the county has had a strategic focus on broadband, but really the importance of that priority became uh, even more evident in the pandemic, and that was an elevated priority as we went through last year's budget process. Uh, second, we'll be looking at the ability to execute a project. This is a lens that considers that existing, you know, a hundred forty-seven million dollar capital budget. The other barriers we have to implement in proposed projects and how and when they may be able to proceed. Uh, third, we'll look at the ongoing operating impacts of projects. Again, this connects to having a kind of single coherent financial picture where our capital plan is talking to our operating plan and the other way around. Uh, as there will be some capital investments that have been written, a pretty wide range of day-to-day costs, and we want to make sure that as we're either constructing or opening new facilities that we're able to operate them. And finally, we will have a equity statement for those projects. And I should note that, uh, you know, this is not a mathematical score or high, medium, low, or maybe some of the other criteria that you look at. Uh, and we'll maybe look at the similar kind of matrix in terms of ranking programs and projects. But, uh, the Department of Finance and Budget has been partnering with the county's Office of Equity Inclusion to assist county departments just be able to better incorporate a kind of perspective equity lens when we're considering service changes at the start of the budget process. Whether that be a capital project or an operating program. And so a lot of this is, uh, is part grown out of the county's adoption of its new value community. Uh, I should say new, but it's been a while since that's been adopted in recent history. Uh, but really just focusing on some fundamental questions, being able to articulate answers to questions such as how do services reduce or changes to services or projects or programs? How does that reduce existing disparities and or enhance quality of life and well-being or access to services and engagement? Are there particular groups, whether that be seniors, youth, low income, women, men, just for example, who are more impacted by those programs? And of course, those impacts could be positive or negative. And also are there, even when there are impacts, are there things the county could do to offset the impacts of that project? Like this is a discussion that the board has had, uh, through working through a cigarette tax and how that would be implemented and considering that, uh, sort of the equity impacts in terms of you know, who, you're kind of who benefits or carries the burden of that program and what are some of the things the county can do to mitigate that? Uh, this would be kind of taking some of that process and discussion and just making it a more regular part of the county's business as we evaluate, uh, future proposals. So moving to next, uh, on the kind of, uh, assumptions, C I P Advisory Committee will be working with is that we will have some revenue sources that will be explored in the context of our total five-year financial plan. Uh, and so this will go into the discussions we have with the board supervisors also in November and December. Uh, there is recent nailing authority that is provided by the state. I mentioned the cigarette tax was one that the board is pursuing. Uh, the board supervisors also expressed interest in October about pursuing a plastic bag tax, uh, which would have, uh, funding related to other environmental programs that would be still in the very earlier stages of bringing back information to the board at another time. But certainly, that is revenue, um, that could factor into future, um, planning. Uh, we have the impact of the summer twenty twenty-one bond refinancing. Uh, I mentioned before, the county's, uh, triple A ratings were upheld. Uh, given the current market, we were able to issue a large amount of, uh, borrowed proceeds and very low interest rates, and that will create some capacity that, uh, did not exist in the prior plan, prior to pandemic. We're also looking at the American Rescue Plan Act funding and how we may be able to leverage other opportunities to support the county's priorities. Uh, good example, that would be, uh, really another example of broadband where the board supervisors has set aside of the county's, uh, American Rescue Plan Act funding received around four point five million to hopefully leverage additional funding from the state uh, to meet additional, uh, kind of broadband needs in our community. That'll be an area we'll be watching from as we get more information from the state in the coming months. And also continuing to monitor the capital bond market environment and the county's authority to issue bonds. Uh, just again, these are just all kind of the revenue options out there that can create capacity. The third thing, as we discussed with the boards, is that in our initial scenario, we're not going to assume a change in the real estate tax rate for operating capital, uh, from twenty-three to twenty-seven. Uh, this is a starting point, recognizing that, uh, much has changed from where we're in prior years and there are other options available that could be pursued. Um, it just even with our current resources to make some things, uh, happen. I'll share as we have placed an increased emphasis in the office of management. I'll share as we have placed an increased emphasis in the office of management and budget as well about really looking at capital projects and assessing what might be possible as projects come, whether the over budget or under budget, to see how we can form a management perspective of create additional capacity for the CIP advisory committee and the boards to work with. So in summary, I've been talking a while. I'll be talking about projects in just a moment and wrapping up. Just where we were, we were been the last two years or year and a half really in kind of this three, six, it's budget management approach. We're now in a place where we've sort of been able to establish we've maintained our strong financial foundation. We've been able to adjust our plans as we run along and we are implementing a capital program of 147 million. We're going to head into a capital process for 2023-27 that will recommend a plan for the county, I'll say the CIP advisory committee will recommend a plan for the county executives' consideration. The board will adopt a plan for the first time since fiscal year 2022. That plan will reflect current efforts of projects underway with emphasized flexibility, recognizing of our guided documents if our priorities are in the middle of process updates. We are also going to be considering not just the capital program, but how the operating program operates as well. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and touch on some projects that have been identified by the board of supervisors on the next slide for consideration. And back, we had in March at the tail end of the fiscal year 22 budget process, when the America Rescue Plan Act was announced, before we knew all the details, we invited some men from the board of supervisors to understand within the strategic plan and those other priorities they've identified. What are those things that would be kind of rise into the top of their mind back in March? And we shared this again with the board last month. And I won't talk through all these projects and details. One, because they're not necessarily all capital projects. In the spring, the board was able to provide funding for Phase Two of the Ryo Road Corridor Plan Study. And that's the third bullet on this slide. And the fourth one on broadband infrastructure I spoke to a moment ago, where ARPA funding is being provided hopefully in combination with state funding to leverage that where there's not going to be an impact in the capital budget. How can we leverage other resources to deliver on those? But certainly, other items on this list would be likely familiar to the planning commission and before, where the neighborhood infrastructure, whether it be sidewalks and multimodal capacity, looking at the transportation leveraging program, the smart scale projects, an example provided at the time was Eastern Avenue Bridge. Continuing to look at parks and recreation, infrastructure amenities. You know, one example is the current phase of fiscal run spun into the capital budget. There's a long-term master plan to build out that park to provide community needs. And I'll say these are just examples of projects. There will also be other staff identified, probably projects that are working through as well. And so we can go back to this if there's questions in the future, but I next want to go ahead and turn it over to Rosalind Schmidt to talk through the work of the school division where they've been the last couple of months.
Thank you, Andy. So as he mentioned earlier, the school board recently updated their strategic plans. And before I present the list of recommended projects for the school division, I want to provide an overview of how it fits within our strategic vision. After a rigorous community and stakeholder engagement process, the school board recently adopted a strategic plan, which helps, has helped us guide our process and priorities when thinking about the CIP. The strategic plan titled "Learning for All" includes a vision that our learners are engaged in authentic, challenging and relevant learning experiences, becoming lifelong contributors and leaders in our dynamic and diverse society. The specific goal and objective related to capital priorities are listed on this slide. And so getting the right resources to educators and students for their teaching and learning is key to our success. We believe that the project criteria as developed by the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee, which is on the right, are in close alignment with our vision and mission. So using our defined project criteria, next slide, Tia, the following projects are recommended. So this is a need-based request, addresses key themes of equity, investment in existing facilities, as well as new investments needed to support the long-term capacity needs of our growing county. The price tag may seem large, however, is built upon the accumulating capital needs of the school division over many years. Adequate capacity continues to be a need for the school division. This is supported by the 10-year enrollment projections and reinforced by both the recently completed development and student yield analysis and a 30-year population forecast. For over 15 years, the school division has been in a practice of expanding existing facilities and when necessary, deploying mobile classroom units in the interim. As these schools all reach a saturation point where expansion is no longer practical, we recommend a strategy for land acquisition and the construction of new facilities. So I think for the first time in a long time, you'll see several new schools in this list. So we also recommend investments into school renovations at all levels to bring incremental updates division-wide and in alignment with the strategic strategic plan, ensuring that each student has access to high-quality learning environments. Means there should be a reliable elevator service to ensure safety and access at all times. In addition, the importance of a healthy environment and having reliable technology infrastructure have risen as urgent and necessary investments as highlighted by the COVID-19 pandemic. So thus, we recommend a new investment into indoor air quality systems and again, recommend the construction of a data center. A detailed justification for each of these projects is included in the 2021 Long Range Planning Advisory Committee report. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosalind. At this point, I would kind of open this to planning commission discussion. Go ahead to the next slide for those two questions that we we hit on in the beginning. First, just kind of, you know, we've been talking to staff for a while and I don't want to take as much time now as it's me to, to answer any questions and just kind of listen to feedback from the planning commission. In terms of how does your awareness of the county's past president, future, inform your thinking about the overall plan? In terms of process and projects, the additional information that would be looked for as we head into future capital planning. And I would turn it over to, I guess, Chair Vivens. If you'd like to facilitate that discussion, or I'll be happy to answer any questions or just kind of just, I'm here to listen.
Why don't you, if you can, if I may ask you to, that's okay. So we have those up there. Commissioners, you are rarely silent on these kinds of issues, so I don't see any hands up. You've given us a good deal of information. I just saw Rick, okay. You've given us a good deal of information. Let me think, one of the things that I would want to hear is, if possible, of the funding that's, that became unpaused this year, how much or what types of projects we might see have an impact on our own community development? So we have a sense of Charles and his team, his colleagues will be have the resources to kind of do the things that don't line up with the, this big ongoing strategic plan and some of the, some of the items that have come out thus far. Then we'll go to Rick and I'm looking for other hands. So if you could just, if there's a way to answer that, that would be helpful.
Sure, I'll start with that. It's timely because I think our staff and Charles have probably met several times over the last few weeks, just around the transportation and future plans. Really looking at what we call the transportation leveraging program, which includes a combination of state matching funds, these other multimodal projects and trying to figure out, you know, what is the timeline for those future priorities identified through the planning commission and the board? To make sure that we're positioned ourselves to draw down those state matches as we can and to support the interconnectivity in those other areas we move in. And I'll say that if Charles and Tia also on this call, if you were to add anything to what I've said, that is one of the, certainly it's one of the areas of strategic priorities and board supervisors, if we kind of call those non-strategic priorities. That was funding was included as part of the the work for CIP advisory committee did that. And that would certainly be part of the, a key part of the committee's discussions in this process as well.
Thank you. And so I also noticed this go on before I sort of turned to Rick. We've been told at some point that there were lots of system updates that are going to take place around, just in general, around, around the county's business. And I was wondering whether or not those are going to be funded from here or they're going to be funded in other ways. Particularly helpful to know about our own, the community developments, software needs, but also and just in general about the, about the counties.
Sure, I can speak to that. We've, you know, currently this is a community development issue, but it's also a financial budget and HR and IT and really a county-wide issue. Those things touch every county and department and they really touch every citizen who tries to interact with county in a virtual way. So we've really been on a process, I'll probably say for three or four years about looking at our processes end-to-end, looking at our systems and how they are integrated or how they're not, or how they, you know, and all those disjointed. And so we've been working with our IT department, our certainly community developments, our human resources, our finance budget staff to figure out a plan for what is a kind of end-to-end process look like and the timing of all of those phases to be implemented over the next few years, really modernize our county's core systems, so that we can improve citizen access, we can improve data and how it talks between systems or where it doesn't talk right now. How can we take time where we can take processes that may be manual and have those employees do more analytical work where you're just kind of again, some major process you can, but as well, how do we create systems that are faster for staff to train and learn on, which can then have kind of corresponding effects on recruitment and retention? So that will be a, also a core part of the CIP, that the CIP advisory committee will be looking at. I'll say that will also tie into our theme of the operating budget as well, because as technology these days, there's the infrastructure side, there's also the kind of the people and ongoing maintenance side to implement that. And so we're looking at this at, from kind of all angles to ensure that both of our plans are talking to position ourselves for that. So that will be a consideration in this year's process.
So we probably then won't see anything, we won't see real sort of movement in that, in those areas until sometime next year.
Yeah, I would say the, the groundwork is happening right now. And so this is a credit to the board of supervisors over the last couple of years. We've had funding managed through what we call our project manager and office, which actually then renamed recently to our performance and strategic planning office, where they had had project managers to work and kind of go almost major project implementation by major project implementation to handle those in ways the county has not done historically. And so I'll say that though the funding would not take place until July 1st of 23 through this, a lot of the groundwork and so that business process analysis that has to happen for that to be successful before the time comes to buy a system, a lot of that work is underway currently right now.
Rick.
Andy, I believe it was slide number six that you cited that the county had appropriated 91 million since January of 21. My question for you is, what percentage of those funds was provided through ARPA versus the percentage that actually came out of Alamo County-generated funds?
I'd say of that 91 million, currently, none of that is related to the American Rescue Plan Act. And the reason for that is because the county adopted its budget in, you know, early May. And though ARPA was announced in kind of late March or so, the details of when the county received its funding and all of that was not until mid-May when we received kind of our first tranche of funding, which was around approximately $10 million or so. And so I think part of this plan was to set the stage with the board of supervisors that I'll say we're just, one of the differences in ARPA funding is we've just gone through an exhaustive process with the cares, the coronavirus, aid, recovery, economic security act. I may have that acronym slightly off from my memory. But we had a very tight timeline to spend that funding when it was provided, I believe it was last, you know, the spring of 2020 and to be expended by the end of 2021. In the framework that we discussed with the board of supervisors, as we knew from the ARPA timeline, we would have multiple years to spend that funding. So we could have a moment to kind of take a timeout and pause and be strategic and not rush out to certainly get that community into get that into the community and support it as head. But we don't need to rush and go as fast. And we have some time to be deliberate, so we don't miss the opportunity to, you know, have matching funds with the state to leverage that funding even more. And so that's some of the rationale in terms of why we are where we are. But the county is, I'll say what is not in that 91 million is the county has about 21 million in ARPA funding, a portion of which the board has said, let's allocate that in the current fiscal year to support programs around some more human services functions. And then the bulk of that funding is intended to be looked at through the 23 to 27 budget process.
Okay, I thank you for that answer. Certainly, when looking at the fiscal year 21 budget, I recall that the board had an active discussion about the potential need to phase in a property tax increase over the course of the next, at that point, the next four or five fiscal years in 21. This was in the year 19, in preparation, the year 19, but we were in the fiscal year 20 budget at that point. And looking at the fiscal year 21, 22, 23, 24 and 25 budgets, I recall that there was active discussion about a need to augment resources to address the yawning needs within the CIP, not only from the school division side of the ledger, but from general government. I just want to express some concern when I see an early slide number eight or nine, I can't recall which one it was, where you've submitted a kind of ceteris paribus here, all other things being equal, that there would not be an increase in property taxes. So if you have really limited funds coming out of ARPA source, and we have an even more dramatic set of school division capital needs combined with the goals and objectives of the board to address inequities out there in terms especially sidewalks and conveniences for pedestrians. How, where are the funds going to come from? Understanding the fact that 36 million was the last authorization by taxpayers for a bond issue and 36 million would not begin to come close to addressing the needs of this capital plan that I see here. Attached to that is the concern now that interest rates may be going up in the very near future and the window of opportunity for bonding authorization looks like it's narrowing dramatically. So that's one other question. Then I have one more about transit shelters and I will then cede the floor to other members of the commission.
Sure. Thank you for that feedback. I'll admit, I'm kicking myself a little bit because as I was preparing for this presentation, I was thinking, this is really financially heavy. How could I cut down some of the information just to make this a little more digestible? And two of the slides I took out were two that we talked about with the board and the school board related to this change in the tax rate in terms of where were we two years ago, where we are now. So I don't have those slides to pull up, but I can speak to conceptually where we are. And I'll say, there certainly is a starting point, the CIP advisory committee and also the board of supervisors could take that in a different direction, but we, just to kind of recap where we are, you are correct that the plan back in the winter of 2019, prior to the pandemic, contemplated an additional penny that would be in effect from 21 through fiscal year 25. And when the fiscal year 21 budget was recommended by the county executive, there was not that additional penny that was included. It was essentially delayed a year. And before any action was really taken of that, the pandemic started, all the budgets were redone in weeks, so we just, everything changed. And so working through, you know, why we simply wouldn't go back to, at least as a starting point, is that plan, as much has changed. And just to give an example of some of the things that have happened is that we've looked at, you know, as project schedules and lead times and our ability to execute. One of the things that we're seeing already, especially we know with school projects in summer where there can be such a tight window to deliver on those. And if materials don't arrive, we've seen some projects that had essentially been moved a year. And so as we think about particularly for a lot of those projects that are borrowed heavily, when, when does that actually happen and when does our borrowing happen? Because part of this goes into the cash and debt analysis in terms of when does the money have to actually be available for what we can execute on. The second thing I would touch on is that we will have more capacity than we did in 2019 in that winter session because of the refinancing that took place at, as you look to those very historically low interest rates. I can't remember, Tia will probably correct me, but it was well under 2%, which is just, you know, far beyond what the county has seen historically. And so there will be capacity available there as well. There are options to explore revenues that the state has granted in the last two years that could be explored. And I'll share information that we gave to the board on November 3rd that will be followed up as well. But I did not include in this presentation is that we've seen a really dramatic change in our local economy in the fourth quarter. And if we were to look at, you know, what happened in the first three quarters of fiscal year 21, you would see year-over-year revenue growth of around, I think, 2.6% was the number. And what you would see in a typical year when there's not a pandemic going on is that you'd see fourth quarter would tend to be in a percent or so of that 2.6. The actual year-over-year revenue growth we had in the fourth quarter was actually plus 7%, is just an unprecedented change. So as that base is happening, based on how we allocate funding to capital and the school division and the government, there will be some additional funding available in the local base, because what we've seen in our data is those trends are continuing to fiscal year 22. And we gave the board supervisors a preview on November 3rd and will actually tomorrow as part of the board's long-range planning, I'll be talking with the board in terms of the data and what we're seeing and how things are changing. And that will lead to a budget amendment on December 1st coming to the board. And so a part of this too is that it's, we're seeing changes in our local economy that we just had not seen and some flexibility in our financing that didn't exist. So part of the thinking was not to say that tax rates So part of the thinking was not to say that uh tax rates wouldn't be considered in the future, but. Ensuring that we were doing our due diligence to explore those other options and that capacity that we have gained. So that is. Certainly peaceful can reasonably disagree with that approach, but that was sort of the rationale that was presented in terms of why there's a. Different approach to uh what was considered in the winter of twenty nineteen. Uh I'll pause there in case you have a follow-up question, because that was a a long answer.
Okay, I I don't have a follow-up a question to that, but I had really just a a point to make. I noticed that transit shelters were listed as a desirable. Um entities to be supported by C I P budget. And I just make an observation. That the planning commission has looked at several redevelopment projects, special use. Um projects where transit was something this body as a planning commission talked about. And we urge that there be provided by the developer transit stops. And I don't think there was much support for that from the county, nor was there residence. Uh resonance, not residence, but resonance on the board of supervisors for supporting. Uh transit stops. And my point is, rather than being part of the C I P budget. That could really be something that developers should have a hand in funding. On these special use projects, especially when they're on a public transit route. It's not really the role of the government locally to provide those post facto. But when that development comes in, it seems totally appropriate. As we ask also for bike lanes, sidewalks, that we also ask and expect transit shelters to be included. As part of the cost of doing business in the county. Uh to cover infrastructure needs for our citizenry. So just an observation. That isn't really budget related, it's just more process related.
Yes, I I think your point is is well taken, is that in the spirit of leveraging funding, is there are state programs that can be provided to provide support to. Either be a combination of CAT or VDOC to put those stops in place. So we've been working with uh Mr. McDermott and Community Development and others to try and assess what could be done differently as part of this, particularly as. Uh the community is undergoing right now some transit planning studies through the regional transit partnership with Thomas Jefferson Planage Commission. Uh that could uh influence what transit looks like in our community in the future.
Okay, thank you very much, Andy.
Tim, and if if there's anyone else, I assume there will be. If you would raise your hand, that would be helpful, but Tim, okay, Tim then Cory.
Thank you. And Andy, thank you for this. I I guess having heard this for a number of years. And I realize that there's been a transition in the people who are managing this and thinking about it at the highest levels in the county. But when Steve Allhouse um and Trevor Nelson and and Mark Graham would come to us, there would. In past, there was kind of a a budget one oh one that was presented. Up front, and I think because many people, many citizens listen to these presentations, it would be helpful to have just the succinct. Discussion upfront of the different components of input and output to the county budget. So you're placing the C and C I P in that context. Also. Um I think what's been most helpful to us in the past as opposed to just having. Projects listed with dollar amounts that you have, they're actually spread out, projected out over a number of years. So ongoing and large expenditures such as um the new northern high school that was being considered at some time. I mean, I realize that there's a a different framework now, but just using that as an example, that was projected through. The courts, the courts improvements were projected through. So I think it's, it would be helpful to have that. And then to see which of those are actually C I P pieces and which are not. In conjunction with that, and something that we haven't had really since Mark Graham departed. Is a presentation to the planning commission each year before the budget. Uh ideally before the budget cycle, sometimes it wasn't, but it was in around that time that talked about. What the staff hopes were for um budgetary items. For community development and planning in particular. And then how those were broken down into what were ongoing. Internal budget funded and which of those were going to have to be um pushed out to the C I P. And we were having discussions with the last planning director before he departed about not having. Uh things like small area plans um happening, coming out of the C I P funding anymore. So to my mind, this has been a a very good general overview. And maybe it's appropriate at this point in the in the process. But I think that there's a lot more that we need to see and we really should see it upfront. Um most of us are aware of that notebook that you have to put together with. All of the different pieces, all of the different requests, many of which can't be funded. And so it's important for us to have a sense of what really is going to be funded outside of the C I P process and then what. We need to decide whether we're going to be advocating for, because it's really important to planning and and land use thinking for the county. Um and and just as another, so that's just more common. I'd like to hear your thoughts on it. And then as a follow-up to. Um Commissioner Randolph's point about the increased. Property tax, real estate taxes and property taxes. Uh there's been lots of interesting discussions. Um a while back when we were really concerned about where revenue streams were going to come from. About breaking that down, what was the real estate, what was machinery and equipment? How those pieces fed into the to the budget and. And then a a very, a a sidebar to that would be. Can we assume that the reason that um staff at this point is not suggesting. Real estate tax increases is because the is the anticipation that the assessment value of properties are going to be going up. Significantly, especially with the inflation factor that we're starting to see and certainly the new material costs. And therefore, in effect, there's going to be a real estate tax increase, even though the multiplier is not going to be increased. The taxation multiplier is not going to be increased. That's, those are my questions and comments.
But I'll respond to a few. I was taking notes. So if I missed one, please let me know and I'll step in. I'd say that, thank you for that feedback on a budget one oh one. I know that we have done things in the past as new board members and plan measures have come on. Um I will say that uh knowing that we'll be doing that with a new board member soon. Uh we get, I can uh discuss with that onboarding process and figure out what we could do broader, but also your point is understood in the public is that. Uh you know, beyond just tonight's plan, there's a lot of other high-level budgets in terms of. Uh you kind of, where does the money come from? Where does it go in terms of operating capital and some of the other basic mechanics, basic mechanics that we can cover? Uh I think in the, I appreciate your feedback too on the. Uh kind of showing projects over time in terms of kind of also the long-range planning where I feel like we. About eighteen months ago, we sort of had to call timeout. Maybe this year we're sort of crawling in long-range planning and next year we'll be walking. Uh knowing that we've kind of had a shift from a plan, there's so much uncertainty, we didn't know so much. And now as we're working to a plan where there will be. Age from now, and there will always be unknown, like it's the degree which is. So I think as we uh work with in the future, as we work with the community development director and her staff to bring those priorities back. Before the plan commission, I think we could find time to do that as well. I think uh to the question as well about how those studies are funded. Uh we did make a change based on the uh recommendation of the C I P advisory committee, I believe it was two or three years ago. Uh to discontinue funding those studies through the C I P. And we've been able to. Uh the last few years, uh set funding aside and other designated reserves to be able to move forward things, the Ravenna Corridor study. Uh Ryanville Court study and actually the uh comprehensive plan funding to implement that, the related work on zoning ordinance. We identified, I believe it was around six hundred sixty five thousand, maybe slightly off of that number in most recent budget. Uh so put that in the operating budget to take care of the needs that the department, the community development department would need to multiple years. And so. Uh there's a regular dialogue that I have with myself and Miss Florida, the director and her staff to ensure that uh. While the capital process isn't the funding source there, we do have a plan to address those. I would say in terms of the uh, look through my notes to make sure I haven't missed anything. Certainly, the reassessment uh discussion will be actually an update on December fifteenth from our county assessor to the board and where those properties are. Uh we assumed at the time, the twenty two adopted budget, there would be reassessment uh plus one point seven five percent compared to calendar year twenty one. Uh you know, the it's, they're too early in that work uh to determine where that is, but certainly when we all look at anecdotally what happens in the housing market. Uh there are signs to have a more positive reassessment than that, but it is too early to say that, but. Uh that will be an update uh that we have with the board on December fifteenth and how that fits into our long-range planning. Uh that could uh you know, certainly have an influence in terms of the available revenues for next year. Uh so while I don't have a number I can provide on that, there certainly is a update that will be coming. Uh and as we all expect many on this call, pay attention to what happens in the local economy, the building community. Uh there are anecdotal signs that number could be higher than one point seven five percent. Um so I I think I commented on everything. If I missed a question, please correct me, because I don't have an oversight for that.
You did well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Corey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh good afternoon or good evening, I should say, Mr. Bowman. It's great to meet you. Um handful of questions. If you could go back to this slide that showed the school uh C I P proposal. The, there you go. Um those, okay, I saw like the rent of high school renovations and so forth. I don't know what's included in that, but my my question kind of goes back to. Like the A R P and some of that funding can be used for HVAC, uh you know, renovations and so forth. So I'm curious for for the first question. As you're looking at these renovation projects, and they say some of them are planning to do HVAC renovation, is there coordination to say, hey? While I'm doing the HVAC, this might be a nice time to replace the roof, or it might be a nice time to replace the windows. Is there coordination included in that number if A R P funding is being planned to use? Does that question make sense?
I'll ask Mr. Schmidt to speak to that.
Corey, yeah, I think I think I understand what you're asking. Um so I think it's important to note that these projects. Um used to be called the below-the-line projects. Um they do not include our maintenance replacement projects. So we have a pretty robust maintenance replacement program that includes. Roof replacements and windows and mechanical equipment and things like that. So to answer your question, yes, we try to coordinate those projects. Wherever possible, where where it makes sense. Uh in terms of um A R P funding, I'll draw your attention to line nine, which is indoor air quality. Uh that is a comprehensive program around uh mechanical improvements that uh there is some opportunity to have some matching funds. Um from A R P funding. That we are pursuing.
Uh thank you for that answer. I also make sure I got it right. So the, in the example I use, it wouldn't come out of this right here. There's a separate maintenance budget that would take care of that stuff. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um but my second question would be, I guess I'll go back to to Mr. Bowman. Like as you're coordinating with economic development, I was just curious about, you know. What level of priority is placed on some of those utility projects? Because it's, I saw a bulletized list of, hey, here are the things that we're talking about at that board meeting. Here's how we prioritize things. Curiously, how much of that goes towards like site readiness, right, to try to bring in employees? Which in return, obviously, would bring in tax revenue. If you talk a little bit about about that, if that's included in there.
Yeah, I think uh, yeah, I think on the slide of projects, there's a reference to uh water and sewer connection. Which I think in the board's mind was more around uh kind of the assistance program from a human services perspective. But to answer your question, uh in case I misunderstood what that reference was on the slide, but. Uh we do have in the county, there is currently around uh I believe two million dollars in kind of a public private, private partnership fund. In the C I P, that is related to uh. Um that a hundred forty seven million that is included in that amount separately from the C I P. This is a good point to uh Commissioner Keller's point of all the kind of different parts of the budget and how they talk to each other. We maintain a separate uh economic development fund that is used if there are issues of site readiness or. Uh leveraging the state and federal funds or providing uh whatever opportunities we need for performance agreements of county cash investment, whatever. Flavor that may take given the project. Uh we currently have a balance of around uh, I believe. Uh I'll say it's a couple million or so. I'm not going to quote the exact number, so I'll probably say the wrong thing. Uh that's a discussion we had with the board in December as well is that because we had strong uh financial performance in fiscal year twenty one, it's created some available one-time funding. And certainly, one of the board's nice priorities is economic development. And how do we begin to uh invest that funding uh to uh. Have a greater kind of growth by not really divide it up separately. Um and so there there would be a kind of a discussion outside of the C I P, the board will be having over the next couple of months in their long-range planning, but. That would be the funding source for some of those performance agreements and other site readiness areas and the areas of economic development. Yeah.
Very, very helpful. Forgive me if some of these questions are silly. This is my first.
No, it's no problem at all.
So la- last one, um if you go back to, I guess it was a slide that kind of showed. The priorities and the bullets from the discussion from the the Marx board meeting. I think it's one more back, actually, trying to take notes. Whenever I was typing, I was typing notes as you had it, so don't worry about it. But like assess accessibility projects or like public safety projects. I was just surprised at the scene of that. Is that woven into the equity piece or, for example, assess projects or?
I I would say with uh for for public safety, uh um. Well, I was to make sure, I I I think you're thinking of pedestrian safety?
No, no, I was thinking more like the fire stations or police stations, like. Is it safe to assume that's all good or?
Is it the the largest cost in our public safety is a lot of the maintenance replacement, what Mr. referred to as the uh kind of. Uh it's kind of the maintenance replacement program. So apparatus, replacement of engines, name, all kind of taking care of that base. Uh the uh really through the cop plan and the vision that was set out, you know, long ago, we've been on kind of a twenty-year path for fire rescue where we've. Uh built stations around the uh urban area in that ring. So at this time, in terms of new stations, there's nothing on the horizon. Now there are other long-term needs in public safety out there. Uh and I I think certainly, uh you know, the PD may have just with radios and other kind of basic instructors who work with them. But in terms of the new facility, uh there may be long-term issues on the horizon related to training. Uh but uh this is kind of a snapshot of where we're in public safety. I'll I'll stop there before I go down a rabbit hole in a lot of detail.
No, I I think you covered it. My last one was accessibility, it's like ADA upgrades. Is that part of the. When you're prioritizing, is that the equity piece or like where does that all?
Yeah, I think certainly, well, I think with ADA, we would certainly look at that even for equity. That's a mandatory thing. As we're looking at retrofitting facilities. That certainly is something that would be considered as part of that. Uh I really, again, as part of that maintenance replacement budget, if we are going into um. I'm escaping. I remember there was an issue at a school a couple of years ago. While we were doing some work, we needed to do something on the side to ensure ADA compliance. Uh but also uh in terms of kind of that uh multimodal internet connectivity, in terms of pedestrian orientations. Uh equity would certainly be a consideration there as well.
Thank you. I'm done. Thank you.
Anyone else? Got a question, Dan?
I just uh one question with the, I see the, you know, as you had that list up there, we had a broadband access as one of the C I Ps. Uh I'm curious if the new um, you know, kind of infrastructure that had a lot of support for broadband. And it coming from the federal government, how that is, and I'm sure it's like caught off the presses, but how does that impact? Uh potentially subsidizing some of the funding from the C I P with with maybe some of the federal dollars coming available for broadband in Alamo County?
Yeah, certainly hot off the presses would be a a good uh reference, because I think I got an email this morning with kind of the high-level infrastructure, sort of where they're. You know, what what amount for climate, what amount for broadband and those other things. I know that typically. Uh based on the experience of cares in ARPA, there's usually a little bit of delay as this kind of uh. You know, feeds down to the state and those governing agencies will then sort of set out the guidance and compliance there. Uh so we'll be watching what is available for broadband from that infrastructure bill, but there's no details at this time. Uh but we do have at least that four point five million from ARPA funding already identified, hopefully a dollar-for-dollar match from the state. Uh with contingency plans, should now that fully materialize, so. As a portion, that's the hot off the presses information. I can't uh, I haven't learned anything new on that. This is an email sitting in the box in the last hour, so.
Yeah, I guess um from a planning commission perspective, I guess this could be to others, is that I know the FCC publishes a broadband map. And I know there is already existing, yes, when we look at Alamo County, a lot of their judgment is on areas that. Um have one or less providers uh and and how that cross-reference with our population and and need there. Um the ones that have one or less often have priority for some of that federal funding. Um so it'd be interesting to. You know, not to give the staff more work to do to see what the cross-reference of that is uh within the county um from a G S perspective.
Good.
Thanks.
Luis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, yeah, I certainly appreciate particularly the, the slide where you talk about the uh. Uh, school board, uh, improvements in the schools and the five year plan and, and, and you have it prioritized. Um, so it kind of gives you a sense on, on the expenses there and, and the need. Um, we've outlined a series of other needs, infrastructure, sewer, water, uh, transit. Um, and I, I'm just wondering if you have the same level of detail in terms of. Cost associated with some of those and prioritization, right? So we, you know, we approve master plans. Uh, recently we had a Croze master plan approved. Um, it has a number of infrastructure needs associated with that. There was a extensive traffic analysis. That was very good and it identified, um. That several issues that need to be addressed. And so I'm wondering how we're, we're looking at those approved master plans. With the CIP and putting the same kind of rigor as we seem to be doing with the. With the school board and, and maybe they exist. I'm just not seeing it here. And I'm just wondering if you can address some of that in. In terms of where are we with getting uh the detail and, and some of those other infrastructure needs around the county?
Sure, I, I'll, uh, Charles, you thought you about to say something?
Yeah, uh, love your speech there. Christian cares Arizona, uh. Many of the projects in our master plans uh are dependent upon uh. Grant funding cycles. Uh, so a lot of them are sidewalk improvements, trail improvements, road improvements, things like that. Uh, a lot of infrastructure related improvements, we often, uh. We identify them in these master plans, uh, or other small area plans, corridor studies, and that's kind of the very first phase uh, uh, of identifying a project. And then we'll go through some of the conversations we've been having with uh Mr. Bowman and his staff. Uh, would be this next phase of, of bedding it through a preliminary engineering study or so, so some additional work to try and vet that project a little further. Identify costs and identifying the best funding mechanisms. It may be. Um, what, once we have that, then we can come back to uh Mr. Bowman's uh team and, and discuss. Uh, would, would this project be best suited to be funded directly out of, out of county uh dollars? Would it be better to pursue a state grant? Um, a federal grant or whatever that funding source might be. So it's really, the master plans are really that first avenue. That's an adopted project and adopted goal. Uh, but it takes a while to work through the details of those so that we make sure that. Once we do commit to funding, we can actually implement those projects. Um, it's simply drawing a line on, on a map saying, we want a sidewalk here. There's all, you know, as you know, there's a lot of variables uh that, that need to be worked out before we uh can flush out the details of that project. So. Um, it's usually is that starting point from the master plan that we then work through over the next year or two as funding becomes available or opportunities arise.
Yeah, and, and I certainly appreciate that. And certainly ma- maybe my, my reference to the Croze was, was not the, the right one. I mean, we've had infrastructure issues throughout the county for, for many, many years. And, and there's some listed here, right? We had a whole list of sewer and water and, and, and transit. And so I'm just wondering. Um, where, you know, are we, are we able to get the same level of, of um detail in terms of. Cost and prioritization to s- some of those projects. Um, as we're seeing with, with the school board, because. You know, there's, there's, I mean, certainly those needs are real and we understand them in terms of new schools and upgrades to schools, but. There is a lot of other things that we've touched on here today, uh, the broadband issue, the sidewalk issue, ADA issues and, and so. So is there more detail that perhaps we could see in an, in a comprehensive? CIP, I mean, the CIP is certainly more than just a school board. And, and I'm just not seeing the same level of detail. So my question is, is that available? Can that be made available as part of, of part of this process?
Uh, yes, we did. Uh, that is available. I think some of that may just be intent of uh having a higher level of discussion, but as we head into the advisory committee. We'll have, uh, you know, estimates for those projects, timelines that would go with them and, and all those things. And we can share that with the entire planning commission to be, uh. I think as we, we think about this conversation now, I'm thinking about what's happening now versus what will happen in the future as well. Some of the information that I'm hearing from you all that will be helpful the next time we come for you before we're planning the twenty four to twenty CIP. What are some of those things that will help you provide a better input? So, uh, thank you for that.
Thank you.
And did you have your, your hands up still? Do you have another question, Tim? Your hands up, okay. So, so part of what we were, we were sort of intimating it was about what happened during the funding that came through over the last. But this administration, the previous one. But do you have a sense, so this is, I guess, for you, Mr. Bowman, do you have a sense or is there a group of people inside the organization, inside the county who will be actually on it? When the build back better, um, sort of work plans start coming out, because there's a number of pieces in there that actually could supplant. And provide some breathing room for some of the other projects that we're trying to do. There's a number of things that Charles mentioned and that some of my colleagues mentioned, they would line up nicely with, with fun, with. So the philosophy of build back better that would might give you some, might give you some more opportunities.
Yes, we, we actually, when uh ARPA funding was announced in the spring, we took one of her analysts and kind of restructured and dedicated her essentially full time. On this federal planning, because at that point we were essentially wrapping up cares about to embark on ARPA. And just not knowing what else would be out there in terms of those other kind of buckets from the state that may be available. And so, uh, you know, she is regularly plugged in with all of our national and regional state organizations to be, say, say to the latest, so. That is a kind of strategic kind of allocation of resources. We've had to do differently within finance and budget to stay on top of that.
So I'm going to ask you to sort of put a, a marker on your calendar, and I think would be helpful when you're in the midst of this. If I realize that we have a, a member on, on, on the committee, that Ms. Fireholt's there. I think it actually would be helpful if you could come back and have us in a detailed conversation about how does the CIP integrate with the sort of things that we're seeing. I think that'd be helpful for not only for the planning commission, particularly as we go, we sort of begin the process of, of, of thinking through. The, the big issues around the comp plan. I think that'd be a helpful process, but also thing for the community. And now here's my big bugaboo. So here's my bugaboo. One of the things that we hear about our meetings, particularly when we're looking at significant projects, is that. We don't have enough school space to put our little kids in, even though the little kids aren't there. And the little kids aren't going to be there for some X amount of period. And I've, I sit on another non-related uh advisory committee for the school board and have said, and will say it in this environment. Roslyn, it would really be helpful if the school board could say in very public ways what the capacity, what the plan for capacity is. Because there's a lot of misconceptions or things that, that, that get brought up in our review of projects. That if we could just have a school board angel right here to say, no, this is actually what we're doing on this. Might bring some of the, the angst down in communities or say, this is really what we're doing. You don't know about this yet, but we've actually about to talk about this. So a way for, for, um. Our plans, our, our plans for building, our plans for, are for conceiving the way uh our young people are going to be educated. Would really be helpful, given that we've got all these. We've got this expectation for new housing that means that, that the county has said that it's expecting and all of that is contingent. Sometimes on communities being aware that the children will have a place to go and learn when those projects are finished.
So, um, I will, I think our most com- comprehensive document is this long range planning report. The world caveat, though, it's all depending on funding. So I think that's the, this, this, the struggle the board would have is, yes, we have plans, but there's no guarantee at this point. That with that seed is built in the next couple of years.
I think just having, having, being able to speak in a way to get your. Uh, to get your public affairs person out into the community or in the press or however, just saying, these are the plans. Cause sometimes it feels like some of the feedback that we're receiving is that they don't even know that there are plans. Which then puts in, in the community's mind a halt on any sort of new or resistance, I shouldn't say halt, because it's not, it's, it's the supervisor. But a resistance to hearing about, about new, about uh new and emerging projects that come around the community. That's all. Uh, anyone else? And since this was, so this was, we were receiving this information, unless the commissioners feel so inclined, I'm not. Uh, there's, I'm not going to open it for public comment. I'm going to let that happen at the supervisors level when. When you're going to wrestle with this, Mr. Bowen, and assuming that you have ways for this, for the public to come to you. We received this, who, I think we put a good, a good number of, of, of requests before you about more detail and how does this connect? To the kind of projects that are deeply within, within our, which are deepest in, 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 in the areas that we're concerned about. And then how do we get the resources, just the on the ground resources, the system resources? For uh, for community development so that we can be effective as they're looking at the, looking at the projects and dealing with the projects that are coming before us. It, it feels like something's released, so we're seeing a bit more things than we've seen over the last few of. Hmm, last year, I, I, I will imagine that that's going to continue as people are racing against, uh, are racing against sources of money, so. Getting them to be able to respond to that will allow projects to get completely allowed, allow. As we heard from someone today, of the backlog or permits to be done in the big projects which are having coming before us to be handled in an efficient and effectively.
Uh, thank you. This has been a lot of helpful discussion and feedback, both in the short term and the long term, again, thinking about the upcoming weeks to build a twenty three to twenty seven CIP. But also thinking about how Department of Finance and Budget and our staff effectively partner with community development and the planning commission. Uh, for the future, and I would offer that if there's, you know, a, a time where. Aside from just kind of these meetings where there's interest in learning more about how the budget process works, how the county handles our financial policies. I, my staff are available and I'm sure Mr. Schmidt and her staff would say the same, uh, kind of sit down and talk through that on a fundamental level in a way that, uh. Uh, may help whatever the areas of interest are, so.
Thank you both. Chris, I appreciate you spending time with us this evening. So we're going to let you go. I'm gonna, and wish you good work. Uh, and that all the various pots of uh funds that can come your way will come your way and come, and come, come there with some clarity and speed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, commissioners, are we going to go forward? Does anyone need to take a short break? And I do mean a short break if you need one, otherwise, hello, Rachel, I think, hello, Tori. Otherwise, we're going to keep rolling. Keep rolling, good, fine. And we'll move on to our next uh work session, which is, which is a comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance update. And I will leave, lead it, leave it to you all to decide who goes first and who goes second.
Thank you, Chair Bibbitts. I'm going to kind of set the stage for us here, uh, since we didn't really have any specific materials and stuff. It's, it's still fairly, uh. Early on in our planning stages, but. It'd been a, a while since we were with the commission to talk about uh these projects. And I believe since our last work session together, Rachel and her team have been back to uh the board. To discuss the scope, uh, further refine that based on the feedback we had, as well as establish an engagement approach for the comprehensive plan. And so some of that work is underway. Uh, everything you'll see tonight is still at a very high level. Uh, and we're just starting to kind of get into, into some of these topics, so felt it was a good time to reengage with the, the commission here. And then we also have, as y'all have seen, some, uh, some zoning ordinance work, uh, all already underway and quite a bit more will come in tandem with this comprehensive plan update, so. Um, really wanted to, to, to find an opportunity to update y'all, get some feedback, um, and, and hopefully outline the process for moving forward. With that, Lori, Rachel?
And thank you, Charles. I'm going to go ahead, um, and get the presentation pulled up. So hopefully everyone can see that, okay? Um, good evening, everyone. My name is Tori Kinalopoulos and also joined this evening by my colleague Rachel Falconstein. And this evening we will be sharing updates on the comprehensive plan. We will share the project goals and rationale for the plan update. Then we will cover both the updated phasing plan for the overall project scope and timeline. And the phase one engagement plan for collaboration between community members, county staff and the planning commission and board of supervisors. And we will have time after the presentation for planning commission Q and A focused on content feedback. So as a reminder for any members of the community who may be listening in or watching this meeting at a later date. The comprehensive plan or comp plan establishes Albemarle County's long range vision that guides growth, development and change for the next twenty years. It assists county staff, appointed committees and boards and the board of supervisors when developing public policies related to private land use activities. And use of resources in Albemarle. The comprehensive plan serves as the basis for land development regulations and decisions such as rezonings and special use permits. Capital improvements, new county programs and the distribution of county budget dollars to programs and agencies. The county's comprehensive plan divides Albemarle County into designated development areas, which are approximately five percent of the county or thirty five square miles. And rural areas being approximately ninety five percent of the county or six hundred ninety five square miles. And the intent is to focus development into the urban areas to create quality living areas, avoid sprawl, improve access to services and protect the rural areas. And each development area has its own master plan. We also wanted to provide a brief summary of board and planning commission feedback to date. Staff presented a draft phasing plan and project budget estimate to the board at their February third and March seventeenth work sessions. The board expressed a desire for a more streamlined process to allow for concurrent work on the comprehensive plan and other high priority projects. And the planning commission had a work session on April thirteenth where staff presented a revised draft phasing plan. And the commission expressed support for concurrent comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance updates. The board of supervisors held two recent work sessions to review updated comprehensive plan materials. At the October sixth meeting, the board expressed support for concurrent comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance updates. And then at their November third meeting, the board adopted a resolution of intent for the comprehensive plan update. Which included the updated phasing plan and phase one engagement plan. And the board also requested more information on the working group, which we'll cover in a little bit more detail in a later slide. And there will also be more information placed on an upcoming consent agenda for the board. So before diving into the project phasing plan and phase one engagement plan, we thought it would be helpful to share a bit more detail on the rationale for the comprehensive plan update. And why an update is appropriate at this time. Since the latest twenty fifteen comprehensive plan update, the county has undertaken substantial planning and policy initiatives across the county. These efforts are not currently integrated into the existing comprehensive plan. For example, the board of supervisors prioritized a strategic plan in the fall of twenty eighteen. The board's strategic plan includes climate action planning, economic development, infrastructure planning. Revitalizing aging neighborhoods and expanding broadband, all topics which are relevant to the content of the comprehensive plan. Additionally, several planning and policy efforts have been adopted by the board since twenty fifteen, including the economic development offices, project enable. The climate action plan and most recently housing Albemarle. Finally, to further the county's commitment to providing the highest level of public service and enhancing the quality of life for all residents. The Office of Equity and Inclusion was created in twenty eighteen. And subsequently, a new county value of community was added to the organizational values. Which states that we expect diversity, equity and inclusion to be integrated into how we live our mission. Coupled with recent work and initiatives, Albemarle County is also a growing community. Demonstrated by both the number of new residential units that have been constructed over the past five years and the amount of population growth in the last decade. According to the U S Census Bureau, Albemarle County's population increased by about ten percent from twenty ten to twenty nineteen. Yet not all of this growth is experienced uniformly across the county. As shown in the Albemarle County Equity Profile, co-authored by the Office of Equity and Inclusion and the UVA Equity Center. Over thirty seven percent of Albemarle County households were Alice or asset limited, income constrained, employed households. And an additional nine percent of county households were living in poverty, according to the latest twenty eighteen data. Alongside this growth, there has been increasing demand for urban services and infrastructure. Especially in the context of the pandemic where we've seen increased use of county parks and demand for broadband to support students in our school systems. As well as those employed and working remotely. The last two slides were intended to provide a summary of the changing context of our community and the associated work that the county has undertaken since the last comp plan update. The slide and a couple that follow consider the content of the existing plan and why an update is appropriate at this time. For example, the existing implementation chapter includes seventy priorities. There is not a clear prioritization of these items and the order in which they should be completed. The chapter includes eighty indicators of progress that are intended to be tracked annually. But tracking this data is unsustainable and the sheer number of indicators make it unclear for community members to understand what success looks like. Additionally, the comp plan includes inconsistent and at times conflicting recommendations. For example, there are different land use categories across different master plans and master plan language that conflicts with comprehensive plan language. And these inconsistencies make it difficult for staff to evaluate development proposals. And consider the plan's content when making recommendations to the board of supervisors. The county is also in need of undertaking multimodal systems planning for the Virginia Department of Transportation. To allow urban street types to be constructed, such as those found in downtown Croze and the recently adopted standards outlined in the RIO twenty nine Form Based Code. The state code provision requires coordinating transportation planning with land use planning and provides an opportunity to integrate climate related initiatives. Finally, this moment provides the opportunity to integrate. Finally, this moment provides the opportunity to integrate best practices that exist within the county's policies and plans, such as housing Albemarle, as well as in the planning and development field at large. There are a variety of examples of successful and award-winning planning efforts. Some of these include Minneapolis twenty forty, which reviewed the city's land uses and identified opportunities for a mixture of housing types and levels of affordability. Richmond three hundred, a guide for growth, which focused on environmental justice, walkability, and economic growth through clear priorities called big moves. And Memphis three point O, which focused on flexibility and enabling the growth of its urban assets by reinvesting in identified areas of activity. The county's comprehensive plan update alongside all the county's work is in support of its mission to enhance the well-being and quality of life of all community members through the provision of the highest level of service, consistent with the prudent use of public funds. And these three project goals for the comprehensive plan update highlight the rationale discussed in the previous slides. The goals are to update plan content to reflect county-wide strategic initiatives, including climate action planning, economic development, and multimodal transportation planning, ensure that equity is integrated into the engagement process and the updated plan content, consistent with the county's recently added community organizational value, and improve plan usability by articulating clearly prioritized goals, incorporating metrics for tracking progress, and applying a modern streamlined document design. And now we'll transition to talking about the phasing plan for this project. This is the updated phasing plan, which incorporates feedback from the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors and supports the project goals. The phasing plan outlines the four phases and the general timeline. This project started this fourth quarter of twenty-twenty-one and is expected to conclude in the second quarter of twenty-twenty-four. And the phasing plan also includes concurrent zoning ordinance updates along the bottom of the document, which Planning Director Charles Rap will cover later this evening. We are currently in phase one, growth management policy and framework. This includes reviewing, evaluating, and updating the growth management policy as needed, using the lenses of equity, climate action, and capacity projections. A capacity analysis for housing and economic development in the county is currently underway. And this is to understand if we have the capacity in our development areas for the projected growth of our community. This phase will align the comprehensive plan with the county's updated values and will identify the level of detail that should be included in the plan and develop a framework approach. This is an opportunity to identify the content and level of detail that should be included within the comprehensive plan and which content should be included in separate plans, such as the county's Climate Action Plan or Economic Development Strategic Plan. And hopefully doing this work in phase one will help us provide a more focused approach for the subsequent project phases. Phase two is policy review and framework design. And the goal of this phase is to identify major topics of the comprehensive plan, evaluate existing conditions for each major topic, and update policy statements, goals, and frameworks through the lenses of equity and climate action. Anticipated major prod topics include transportation, economic development, land use, and resource in rural area planning. Based on the work done in phase one and feedback from the community, the topics could be adjusted slightly. And phase two would include pulling in content from recently updated county plans and policies and conducting more detailed community engagement on topics that need more significant updates. For example, we anticipate transportation will require more community engagement as this topic will include the county's first countywide multimodal systems plan. Phase three is strategy development. This phase will review and update the county's action steps and implementation approach. Action steps will be used to implement the policy goals for each major topic identified in phase two. In the current comprehensive plan, these action steps are referred to as the strategies. And in this phase, we will identify priorities and metrics for each topic area to allow for more clear checking of progress and success going forward. Phase four is titled final draft review. And this is where we will pull together the full draft document based on the work done in the previous three phases. We will focus our efforts on identifying and eliminating plan inconsistencies across content. And we will engage community and decision makers on overall plan priorities once all of the content is considered as a whole. Finally, there will be a public hearing process with the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors for final plan adoption. And our hope is that after completing these four phases of work, we have an updated document that achieves the project goals, reflects the county's strategic initiatives and priorities, integrates equity, and clearly identifies community priorities and metrics for tracking progress. And now I'm going to turn it over to Rachel to talk about the phase one engagement plan.
Thanks, Tori. Um, so I'm going to start us off by speaking a little bit about how we developed our phase one engagement plan before we get into the details of what engagement will look like for the comp plan update. Our approach for engagement planning will be to scope engagement plans for each phase of work as the process evolves. Our hope is that this will allow us to be reflective and responsive to community feedback on effective methods. And will also allow us to be mindful of the content we'll be focusing on with each phase as we design those methods. Next slide, please. So to start us off, um, I'll share some engagement goals that we drafted, keeping in mind the new organizational value of community. Uh, the first goal is to conduct engagement, to conduct outreach and collaborate with community members. These perspectives have not historically been well represented in county processes. And we can take into consideration factors such as age, race, place, and income or other demographic factors. Second is to develop and implement a transparent community engagement process and decision-making process so that people have a clear understanding of how we're using the feedback that we receive. And then third is to provide consistent and varied opportunities for community input throughout the update process. Next slide, please. To help inform our engagement approach, we've also looked at best practices and examples of processes from other localities who have done recent comp planning efforts, uh, especially those that align with our engagement approach and goals. And a few examples are shared here on the slide. Uh, Tori already talked about Minneapolis twenty forty. We also like the engagement approach that they took toward their planning effort. Uh, they completed a complaint update in twenty nineteen. And at the beginning of their process, they developed engagement goals, which allowed them to be pretty intentional about the design of their engagement methods. And they're also able to evaluate their methods throughout their process and make adjustments, um, to make sure that they were aligning with their goals. So we like this approach and that's why we, uh, shared those goals with you earlier that, uh, we drafted to help, help advise our work. The second planning effort that we've researched is Richmond three hundred. They created an advisory council to assist in shaping and reviewing the content of their comp plan uh, and to also help build awareness of the project to encourage community participation. And so for this process, they had an application for interested members of the community to serve on the council. And they selected members based on, um, community demographics to achieve a diversity of perspectives based on age, ethnicity, and race and place of residence. Then lastly, I'll cite some research compiled by the American Planning Association, which is a professional association for urban planners. They've adopted a code of ethics for planners that talks about the importance of planners to serve diverse publics and to recommend planning activities that integrate the topics of historic context, equity, and social justice. Next slide, please. So our engagement approach for phase one, um, is involves four major components. And this flow chart on the left is meant to represent the main elements of our engagement approach and show feedback loop for content creation and engagement. And there's a four-part approach that I'll talk about in the, uh, upcoming slides. Uh, that includes internal staff, a working group, broad public engagement, and then legislative review. And each, and the work of each of these groups will be, uh, supported and supplemented by online and in-person outreach and communications. So if you go to the next slide, I'll start first with internal staff. Uh, so the engagement planning includes creating a team of interdepartmental leaders. And the purpose of this team would be to coordinate planning efforts across local government divisions and departments. And it's, and assist with gathering input on the existing comp plan and then draft content as it's created. Coordination with external partners as such as the city of Charlottesville or U V A um, and our, uh, service providers such as Ravenna Water and Sewer, Sewer Authority or Albemarle County Service Authority would also support this team's work and would be included on an as-needed basis. Um, additionally, neighborhood planning staff will also prepare work products as part of the first days of work, including a background report uh, with a summary of existing conditions and the history of the comp plan, which will be used to inform the comp plan update process and serve as a foundation for educational materials. Also be case study and precedent research on growth management, best practices that staff will work on and to draft growth management policy for the board's consideration. Next slide, please. So next is our working group. Um, the working group is, uh, an approximately eight to twelve person group of community members whose role would be to advise county staff on plan recommendations, community engagement approaches, and to support staff and community, staff's community outreach efforts by sharing information with their networks, their neighborhoods, or their communities. The working group would meet about once a month and would include staff-led training on fundamentals of urban planning and community development content before beginning discussion of potential recommendation and policy options. And the goal of integrating these trainings would be to ensure that all members have a shared understanding and background information to inform the subsequent discussions. Next slide, please. In alignment with the engagement goals for the process, county staff and planning, the Office of Equity and Inclusion and Communications and Public Engagement will use the county demographic data and equity profile to design an application and a selection process that is representative and inclusive of the county. And staff has access to working group resources from other localities such as Richmond that I spoke about early earlier, um, and the design efforts, uh, they have used similar approaches and their design of the committee. Um, next slide, please. Oh, I, one other thing I mentioned on this is that we are going back to the Board of Supervisors with, uh, information sharing about the selection process at an upcoming, uh, board meeting in December. Okay, now you can move on. Sorry, Tori. Um, the next, uh, the next topic of our engagement will focus on community workshops. And this is where the broad public engagement will come into play. So we'll provide a variety of opportunities for community members to participate in the planning process through several workshops. Um, these will provide opportunities to learn about existing conditions in the county and planning practices and for members of the community to provide input on potential policies, conceptual plans, and review draft policies and plans. Next slide, please. The formats and methods for our community workshops will include, uh, a variety of, of different content topics and designs. Um, they, they'll be virtual and in-person events with presentation, videos, and activities. We envision also pop-ups and road shows at various locations throughout the county, online and paper questionnaires, possibility of artists or collaborator-led engagement events, and in-person and virtual meetings geared towards specific interests or populations, depending on the topic, and ongoing evaluation of engagement processes. Next slide, please. And then lastly, um, the topic we're calling legislative review with this includes engagement with both the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. Will facilitate work sessions with both groups to review policy and planning options, existing conditions, data, community engagement summaries, and draft planning concepts and policies. Work sessions will be held with the board at the start and end of each phase to review complaint content and scope of work for the upcoming play phase. And planning staff, planning commission, we will have a little bit more frequent, frequent work sessions, perhaps two or three per phase. Um, we're planning at least two for phase one. Uh, next slide, please. All of these different aspects of internal and external engagement will be supported by a robust communications and outreach plan, including online website hub that's consistently updated with planned progress, upcoming engagement opportunities, summaries of past events and educational materials. County staff will also utilize existing county outreach and communications tools, including the county newsletter, via email, the social media accounts, and, uh, the networks of our working group. Materials and engagement opportunities will be provided in both English and Spanish with translation services for other languages made available as is possible and as is needed. And then additionally, county staff will be regularly available for one-on-one discussions and community outreach at reoccurring pop-ups at various locations throughout the county. Next slide, please. So lastly, I'm going to spend a few moments talking about our rationale for this engagement approach. Uh, first, it integrates the new organizational value of community, which states that we expect diversity, equity, and inclusion to be integrated into how we live our mission. Second, our engagement plan aligns with existing staff capacity and the resources that the board has agreed to allocate to this project within the community development work program and budget. And then lastly, the board has stated the desire for a strategic update to the comp plan with a phased approach. And based on the board and planning commission feedback, we've designed an engagement plan that offers the appropriate level of engagement to support the stated goal of the comp plan update and the engagement goals that I previously shared. And the engagement plan focuses on resources and staff efforts, uh, on achieving those goals. Next slide, please. So our next steps for this project will be to refine the working group selection criteria and process. As I mentioned, that will be a consent agenda item for the board in December for them to sign off on. And then we'll begin outreach and trying to recruit for our working group. We'll continue work on our capacity analysis and background research. In December twenty, and December this year, we'll do outreach on, uh, the working group and have a live application for members of the community to apply. And then in January twenty twenty-two, so I'm realizing there's a typo on the side that the December should say December twenty twenty-one is working group outreach and application. And then January twenty twenty-two will be our public kickoff where we will, um, begin the broad public engagement on the comp plan update. And our next slide is, I think, just to wrap up. Um, opportunity for you all to ask any questions you have or to share feedback you have, uh, especially related to content you think we should be focused on in, in the update process itself. Thank you.
So Rachel, wait, let me just pause for a second. So tonight are you looking at input on from the commission, Commissioners on topics or on broad topics? If so, I would ask that we pause that for tonight and give us some time to sort of think about that more, more rigorously and then come back and sort of wrestle with that. Cause I mean, people probably have things that they want, but I also know we have two of our commissioners who aren't here who would absolutely cherish the opportunity to be engaged in that kind of thought process.
So this was really meant as an information sharing for you all, but also open to suggestions if any came to mind as we were sharing that. Um, I will share that the process itself, the phasing plan and the engagement plan has already been kind of endorsed by the board and they've directed us to begin work on it. So um, there's not, not much that we can change on those big pieces right now, but if there are details that come to mind that we should be be focused on, definitely open to hearing that. And then we could come back at a later time. Um, though we do have two work sessions planned for phase one, um, to come back to you all as well.
Thank you for that clarity, Commissioners. Corey?
Uh, thanks, thanks for the presentation, Rachel. Just curious, how will you all, I guess, proactively uh, try to get fresh voices on those advisory committees and so forth? So is that the same people that come to everything?
That's a great question, and we haven't fully detailed that out yet. We're in the process of meeting with, um, a team from Office of Equity and Inclusion and Communications and Public Engagement Offices. But I suspect we'll do some pretty targeted outreach, um, reaching out to people with networks, um, in, in census tracts and, and areas of the community that are less represented in our processes, as well as the potential of just kind of showing up places with, we have a community engagement van now and we can show up in neighborhoods and, and put fires out. We'll, we'll try a kind of variety of outreach methods, but anything we can do to get the word out, I think, is, is what we're going to try.
Thanks. I forgot you guys had the van. So that's cool.
Rick? Rachel, um, I'm recalling, and Tim, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But I'm recalling that in the last comprehensive plan development, there were fifty-two meetings of this planning commission in the deliberation and development process. And what I want to focus in on is what happened two years into the process when there was an election, which resulted in many new members of the Board of Supervisors coming aboard with the county. And the board basically having had a finished product provided by the Planning Commission. And then the board took it unto themselves to basically revive, uh, revise the, the comprehensive plan. And thereby, there wasn't a lot of consultation with the Planning Commission. I do recall that we saw the finished product, but I don't believe there was a lot of discussion. And given the And given the fact that there is an election for the board in the midst of your schedule, of course, there would be. Anytime it's longer than two years, you're going to have an election of the board. And not knowing anything as to uh, what the composition, future composition of the board would be. My only concern is just trying to ensure that there will be provision. If in fact, this body completes the major part of work on the planning commission. That if the board wants to dramatically or in a major way revise. The recommendations of the planning commission regarding the new comprehensive plan. That there be some opportunities for consultation during that process with the planning commission. So that they can get an understanding of the rationale for why the uh, the planning commission was making the recommendations. It did. Um, I I feel as I look back and again, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong. But I felt there was a little bit of disconnect between what the planning commission worked on and thought that was the final product. Um, and then what we ended up with as the final product after the board primarily worked. Um, within its own body on revising the the comprehensive plan. And that's not a criticism of the board. I think by the way, the comprehensive plan was better by the involvement of those. New supervisors, four new supervisors. But it it was a little difficult as planning commissioners to suddenly have such a drastic revision. And then we were not really part of the process. Just a thought going forward. For you to think about that a little bit more, because that's a pretty critical time period if in fact there is a change. Of board members with different emphases as to what they want to see in the comprehensive plan.
Yes, I remember it the way Rick did. Really, when when I came on. Most of the work had been done. It seems to me that there was something maybe with the railroad that hasn't been asked. So there had to be a public here, another public hearing so that so that that piece could be covered about railroad crossings or bridges or something. And then it went on to the supervisor. So those of us that came in. As new commissioners with new supervisors really didn't have much to say at all about. That comprehensive plan and then the supervisors elected to work through almost paragraph by paragraph. I think the the question I have and I I know I'm going into. Dangerous territory, given the moment that we're in right now and seeing what we're seeing. With the two trials that are going on in in Wisconsin and Georgia. But it seems to me that that there's a lot of double speak going on about the equity and inclusion. And if you, if you really want to have that entity, and and I think we should. Then I wonder if it almost needs to be called out what it is and it's not standing for the the full committee. Because if you're talking, what were the numbers that you were putting out like around ten? For the membership of that group. Yeah, so if you, if you're really going to hit. Hit the points and I don't think we have to tick them off. We can look at the demographics of the county. We can look at the socioeconomic. Information that you gave us about the poverty percent and poverty percent and whatever levels. And we can see that a ten-person group. Representing those various communities that have been. For a number of reasons excluded in the past and and even your, you, one of the things that you mentioned was kind of. Planning or urban design one-on-one for that committee to get them up to speed. That is a different kind of body than the kind of folks who self-select because they are. Design professionals, planning professionals um, for the most part. And so. I think that what we s- we've seen in the city and you all are planners and you've got your friends who are in the planning world in the city. But what happened was that there was this movement towards having more diversees. Diverse voices up front. And then when it got really close to things starting to happen. Then a lot of other voices that had been the traditional voices that were of people who were invited to the tables before. May have felt excluded and started to speak up. I would hope that in the county, we could have a way that we could have. All of those voices speaking to one another from the beginning and I'm not sure that. A super large committee based on my experience through the years, a super large committee that's trying to represent everybody is the way to do it. I don't have an answer to it. And I think that what you all have proposed. Um, that there's, there's a great deal of logical logic to most of it. But that's the one piece that seems to me to be failing around the country. It's getting. People with different voices speaking to one another and I don't, from what I've seen that you've presented, I don't think you've gotten. I don't think you've gotten that yet. That's my two cents worth as a person who's been involved in community involvement for many, many decades. And tried to have more voices to the table and and knowing the challenges that are. That you're confronting and trying to do it, which is admirable and I think that we need to do it. But I'll be glad.
No, I I don't think that. I think thank you for that. Thank you for both of them. What I, what both, both those comments are Rick and for Tim. But what I'd like to then ask now is that we build in. Not at the end, as Rick is saying, when there's already sort of a a a recipe's been completed. But we build in through this, through this time for the supervisors and for the commission to sit together. And so that we can hear each other and discuss how these discussions before we get to an endpoint. So if you will, when you're looking at your schedule, when you take this back to the, to the, to the um. To our supervisors to tell them that there's been requests that there be an integration of time, that be an integration of the two boards. At 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 more than one time. And perhaps during the various phases so that we can sit together on this. And that I think the. Uh, that that goes, so I think the piece that that try to try to perhaps head off when Rick and Tim were talking about when we first started this. The piece about the co- about um, bringing the groups of the working group together. I also want to add into this piece that I hope that we can create the type of group, working group and. Construction that avoids the kind of tension that we saw or that you experienced. Around the Crewe's master plan. The people are very clear about who the decision makers are. That there's people who can offer opinions, people can offer observations, but the end of the day, this is a legislative process. That has a certain number of steps and certain procedure that has to go to. And that even their best decisions may not make it to the end and that's not an affront to them. That they are not being disregarded if their idea doesn't make it into the final document. So how we do that throughout, uh, I think is important and helpful. Because I for one, I don't know if I will be here when this is all complete, don't want you. To have to go through that experience on a countywide. I would feel that that was a really unfortunate way for this comp plan. To be, to to come into being the next company. So those are just around the sort of the up, how we conduct ourselves. How we engage with our, with our supervisors, how we set the appropriate tone with the community. So that, so that they um, understand um. So they understand how this process will evolve through this time period. I think it's very, it's it's a consistent message. And it's also an important message since it's set into the DNA of this process. And so I, I hearing the two of you, I just, I wanted to come in. Come in between that and so I'll, I'll let Daniel and where Lou East and whoever else wants has has a comment on that piece. On on the rest things that there are others. Okay. Do you need something else from us? And as I understand, we are going to have a time to just sort of sit with you and. Sit with you and the team and blue skies and stuff. We, you know, we'd really like to talk. I know there's plenty of things that I don't need to put a, but you know, there's a list of things that I would go back over our meetings that many supervisors said, yeah, can we talk about this? Oh yes, can we think about this? Are we going to have an opportunity to sort of rethink this? The one, you know, the big thing that comes to mind is the net versus gross. Um, can we finally come down in big bold, big twenty-point letters? The county does X, whichever one we decide to do, but the county does X so that we can stop um. Confusing ourselves, I guess, sometimes as we, as we look at some of those, some of those things.
Certainly Chair Bibens, I I believe the, we'll, we'll have those opportunities. I think at this point, it's just so high level. Uh, there's so much to kind of. Share with you all this evening about where we are in our process. And as we get into these different phases, you know, um. The different type of topics uh, will come, will become relevant uh, and we'll have opportunities to dive into them. Whether they be ordinance work uh, or a comp plan work, uh, they might tie together. So you know, when we start talking about growth management policies. And that's kind of that big policies and framework phase two that Rachel mentioned where we will really dive into some of our, our county policies, review them. Um, and establish that framework and and hopefully this approach that that Rachel's team has set out also will, will help to keep us on track. Um, so that we don't dive too far into the, into the weeds and finish a product that then uh, as Commissioner Randolph mentioned. Gets gets opened back up. Uh, if we can all agree on the policies and the framework. Before we start drafting individual chapters, um, then we can kind of all work together uh, in tandem. With our community, with the PC and and with the board supervisors uh, as we work through this thing uh, and gradually get it towards a finished product. Um, so that's kind of our, our approach should be a little bit different rather than a chapter by chapter um, and more kind of take that outline view. And work it down as if it was, you know, more of a research paper type approach where we're really going to kind of. Uh, get more and more detailed as we go into that process.
I think that feels reasonable. So is this, if seeing no one, no one else's hand go up, I think we're pitching this to zoning. As the zoning may even. Ordinances or since you're gonna, since I think.
Sure, yeah. Let me speak to that. So I don't have a whole lot to show y'all, um, but but I just wanted to give you an update. Uh, the way the zoning ordinance is gonna uh, work. What will bring some through it. We have a first phase right now. It's called modernization. Two of those have been brought to you through a resolution of intent. Uh, that deal with bonus densities and um, waivers and special exceptions. We have two more part of that category, which will be uh, looking at our land uses and taking them what is currently listed in each zoning category and bring that into a consolidated chart. And simplifying those uses quite a bit. Um, over time, it tends to happen when localities. Get more and more specific and that list grows and grows and grows and grows. And I believe our, our current chart is something like sixteen pages long right now. Uh, very specific uses. We want to kind of tailor that back down to something more reasonable. Um, we also want to take a look at our setbacks. Our setbacks are quite complicated to figure out multiple different ways within each zoning classification. We want to. Try and improve that and make a little more clear for folks applying our zoning ordinance. So. Those are kind of the first big topics. Those two will be coming to you soon. Um, and then uh, a- as we work through items and establish policies, we'll relate back to the zoning ordinance. Uh, some of the big ones, you know, obviously are a lot of our development regulations, landscaping, lighting, some of our development process changes. Uh, road standards and things like that that we'll work through in tandem with the complent as we cover topics. Some of them may be able to uh, be handled internally with staff and then we're also bringing on a consultant, which is about. Through our procurement process uh, to assist with some of the heavier lifting, some, so some best practices and and some production. On that end, uh, and so once we get them on board, we'll be able to really start scoping some of these out. Uh, and each one of those will come to the PC. Uh, into the board for a more detailed discussion. Get your feedback on them and we'll work through them. So. Look forward to that.
Colleagues. Really? Nothing, nothing for uh, planning. And we also, we also have the uh, the the opportunity to actually see Bart. So you know, so if anyone has anything to say. Okay. There are none. Uh, and again, this was an update, so I'm not gonna, you know, we're gonna just keep on moving on this one, I guess. So any other question, like give it a moment before going on, seeing no hands? Cool. Uh, you have, uh, Rachel, you've gone, can can, I'm gonna ask you a question, Rachel. Do you want to see your, can we see it for a second? Did you get what you needed at this point?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Okay, just one minute. You know, I didn't get that question answered. I don't, I don't want you to go away thinking like about that about us. So this will make sure, okay. Um, then we'll move on to committee report and thank, again, you know, thank you for. What I imagine is going to be the functional equivalent of putting a, putting a uh, an offspring through the various phases of its life. You know, for the next four years. So thank you for that. Um, are the committee reports, please? Yes, sir. Mr. Keller.
I hate to do this to make this go a little bit longer, but I think these are two important things that you all should be aware of. At MPO Tech today, um, two things stood out. One is that this needs assessment for transportation. That was a joint house bill five forty-two and twenty twenty-one that passed. Um, we have folks in various agencies, transportation and regional transportation and counties, I guess, all jurisdictions. Looking and working on this. It has a, has a big transit equity component to it and they're going to present. Their findings to the legislature. At the next legislative session. So that's going to be interesting. Of course, all of us that are following. Commonwealth politics, we're thinking about changes, committee changes that could happen. Um, and the impact, I guess the fact that a former transportation secretary who worked with both the Democrats. As well as Republicans is in the kitchen cabinet of the new governor, most likely loads pretty well for transportation. But that leads me to the second part and I cannot get into the weeds to explain it. But I think it would be really useful for this body to get Kevin and Chuck Proctor to come and explain the smart scale changes. The smart scale rating changes, which is, I understand it. Three of the projects that we got that relate to us in this last round. With the new scoring, we would not have gotten. They most likely would have been funded because of that influx of additional. Monies, but in the future, this is really kind of detrimental. To the areas that don't have the larger, the larger urban population. Um, and then of course, there's a factor for the ones that are really rural. So ones like our MPO are are kind of in an interesting position because of that. Another subset of that, besides changing criteria within. Is shrinking the buffer. And the shrinking the buffer, this might be of interest to Rick. May actually be beneficial in terms of more of the pedestrian and bicycle ways. But at the same time, it can have a detrimental effect on the funding. Because it means that you're not looking at a larger area and being able to count the commercial. Pieces that are giving, potentially giving you points in that. So uh, again, it's. What's really interesting is that Chuck Proctor has actually done a spreadsheet where he has compared and kind of projected out what. He thinks would have happened in this last round using the new criteria and then done sort of. A geospatial piece where you're looking at it around the state and which places would more benefit than others. Now, again, we all know what happened in the election. And we know that there's going to be an interesting payback to rural areas. Um, most likely in the next administration. So who knows whether this and that there will be new committee members appointed to the transportation. Boards, so. But I think that these new criteria are most likely going to go through while this administration is in place. And will most likely be the standards for that next smart um, scale round. Those are, again, it was, it was really kind of thought provoking and it was kind of meaty information. And so I would hope maybe Charles that we could, you could speak to Kevin about it and I'm not sure that even he would be. Prepared to speak about it at the level that the the Culpeper um, district um, engineer was able to. These are all.
But Mr. Mr. Proctor would certainly be the one to to speak to us. Uh, I've worked with him many times in the past and he's the uh.
And it's a, you know, it's like a twenty-minute presentation and then I have a feeling that with a. With the kind of questions that our body might have another twenty minutes for questions. So those, those were, those were the biggies from this. Um, well, I guess another that's useful to know is that. The, as we know, because we poached one of their transportation planners to the county. They're short staffed, just as the cat, all bodies are now short staffed so that. So they're actually talking about pushing out some of the studies that are, that are. Um, supporting county requests are being, going to be spread out. So. So again, Charles, you might, when talking, this is sort of that budgetary things that are being stretched out. You can like talk about the effect, some of those things on us too. Yes, Rick.
Tim, I was just going to add that I think it's an excellent idea for Mr. Proctor to come, but to speak to both the planning commission. And the board in a joint meeting.
Yes.
There's a first of a, perhaps a. Let you and I talk about how we advance that, because I, I think that would be important. Because what's happened, and this is, so Tim, what you've just said is, is, is sort of flows through on. Uh, on what I saw when I was on the MPO tech. So the Commonwealth has been focusing on where there are choke points in, in, in traffic. Which go along with where there are not population influx, but it's really where the, where the infrastructure has not. Stayed in check or has not kept up with the, with the, with the population movements in those areas. And that's why we saw a couple of years ago, the additional span, uh, or the tunnel going under the, uh, under the. Under the harbor there, that, that new tunnel, the, the additional lane that's going in there. But they've made it, there, there are some calculations that this, this, this young man from, from, from the transportation department came and talked to us a couple of times. And he never said what the, what the end result was, but, but it was clear that the, the analysis was that the. The Commonwealth was going to put dollars in place that people were stuck in cars. That, I mean, at the end of the day, that's what it felt like. Because none of the criteria that he was using seemed to apply to our era, even though we have lots and lots of commerce. That flows over sixty-four and that flows over eighty-one and comes around us to get to those various places. None of that seemed to matter to them. It was only where you were kind of stuck in Carson. So Tim, what you have just said. Is about how they're going to redo the, how they're, how they're recalibrating the smart scale. That's about, that's about how people get stuck in cars.
Makes a lot of sense, and it also, we need to be aware of how successful our. Our staffs at county, city, um, district office levels have been. In, in getting projects that would pass, and now it's going to be more difficult for that.
That's right. That's right. So I just give you that actual look. Uh, now this all makes sense. You know, you see these various pieces and then all of a sudden it's like. Oh, yeah, okay. I see what we were being told way back then. Someone else have a, have a committee report. Saying, uh, all business do business, how we have some new business. Are we meeting next week?
Uh, at this time, I don't have any public hearing scheduled.
Uh, anybody want to meet to meet next week? Come on now, everybody's not going home for, for Thanksgiving, are they? All right, well then, uh, seeing none, uh, council, we don't have to take a vote on this. We just say we're not meeting next week, right?
If there's no business come for the commission, then there's no need to meet.
There we go. So in that, I, I don't have a calendar in front of me, then when will we meet again?
I got it. Give me one sec.
And Rick, I haven't heard your pup tonight. Is your pup okay?
He's in with Susan. She didn't have a client this evening.
So he's happier. He's actually.
He's a happy dog.
He's happy.
We will be back here on December seventh. Uh, we have three public hearings scheduled for that, I believe. Um. We'll get that scheduled out to you, and then we have another meeting on December fourteenth.
Okay. Thank you.
I will say also while we're on that topic, our schedules are, as you heard, uh. Mr. Neil Williamson mentioned, we, we have quite a, a large volume coming in these days, and we are already getting requests for. January and February public hearing dates. Um, so I know we set our schedule typically in January, but. Uh, we, I may need to look at some, some potential options for January, just so we can start to fill up that schedule. Uh, and accommodate some of these requests, uh, so we can work through our volume. So, um. I'll maybe come back with some, with some auctions for y'all at your December meeting. Really set some, some tentative dates for our January month before we can adopt our full twelve month calendar.
We're okay with that, aren't we, folks? Uh, Tim, what's up? You're, you're, you're.
Have you muted?
When we're through with this topic, I just have one question before we go.
All right, so you put us on that. Yes, Tim.
Uh, one other thing that came up, and again, it was when we used to get these quarterly reports and kind of do now with building startups. But Charles, as things are gearing up and because I'd like to think you guys. Appear to be more organized than some of the past, past groups. Um, there was a statement made in the MPO Tech about, um, seventeen hundred new homes that were going to come. Before the planning commission that were in some stage and would be before the planning commission very soon. And of those, that was primarily three projects and that two of them would fall under the category. I guess because of size, because of location, whatever, that there would be significant V dot review. Implying that there would be opportunities for, um, what do we call them these days? I don't think they're called proffers, but. But concession, can you help me with the right word, Charles? Concessions from the, from the developer. That might help with the alleviating the transportation issues that are already there or would be exacerbated by the new development. And that one of them wouldn't, and that this would be an interesting place for the. For the county for a change, because we've had so many smaller projects where we haven't really been able to. Get much from the developers in the way of what a lot of us are calling impact. Fees, but of course they're not impact fees. So I just thought that was interesting to hear that number. And then I look at them in the places that were discussed and it's like. Yeah, um, it's actually over two thousand when you add in. What we're, what we're reading in the paper from Southwood, and I'm not sure that that's even counting. North Point, is it? North?
Of point.
Yeah, so.
That's North Port.
So for all of this talk about how no housing is happening in our, in our area, is that? I mean, maybe you don't want to say it on the record, but that's starting to seem like a, an awful lot of units.
There's, there's quite a bit on the southern end of the county as well as the northern end of the county. Uh, I would say. That, that amount on both ends that we're under, under review right now.
So maybe four thousand altogether in the pipe somewhere?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but yeah, I would say, uh, if you add, add up some of the large ones that we have, uh. It could be in the three thousand range.
Is that something that, that, that would be useful for people because we're having this so much pressure about build, build, build? Wouldn't it be useful for us to just be able to share what is in the pipeline publicly?
Well, the thing is, most of those are all re-zonings, uh, so they're not yet approved. Uh, so they have been submitted, uh, and they're under review. We have a community meeting for Southwood, uh. Coming up, um. And that hasn't been brought to the commission. We have some other re-zonings that, that are, that are in various spots, but, uh. But that's some of that backlog that's going to be coming to the, the commission over the next, you know, two or three months.
Okay. I just think that, that when we, when we hear all of these, uh, these statements that are, that are made by people who really aren't in the know. About how nothing is coming forward, even if there were lots of caveats put on it, it would be interesting just to be able to have a little bit of. This is the reality, folks. It doesn't have to be specific to the sites and get into the controversies of that, but just. In the pipe, we hope in the next two to five years, we might see, um, groundbreaking on X number of units.
Yep, take a look at.
Thanks.
Any additional or new business? Well then, folks, thank you. Uh, uh, we won't see each other next week and may your team win, if that's helpful. If you pay attention at hand, that stuff, may your team win. Uh, and that is unless you went to Virginia Tech, and I know a few people here did go to Virginia Tech, well then. Hey, you're getting a new coach, so you know, what are you talking about?
I thought you meant around the Thanksgiving table.
Yeah, that is, you know, that, that's what I was talking about. I know some of that gets rough around here. In any event, we'll see each other on, on, on December.
UVA already won because tech sat their coach.
Yeah, and they're trying to hire his son. I don't even get that. Like who, what, what Greek tragedy is that all about, you know? Um, so see everybody on, on December the seventh, and until then have fun and, uh, be safe, please. Okay? Peace, peace, peace.